This conference will now be recorded.
Linda, there was a big crowd, but then it's sad because I know they're all leaving.
5:30, we'll call a meeting to order. Hold call.
Commissioner Inger?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Spillman?
Here. Presley.
Presley, I think she's in the back.
You can all rise for prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Come on up here, Presley.
Yes. Just a moment. I'll do the prayer and then you'll do the pledge, all right?
Okay.
Let's bow our heads. Father, grant us the wisdom and the courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, justice, and love. And may we always pray not only for our city, but our county, our state, and our nation. We ask for protection for our first responders as they perform their duties. And guidance for the city employees to keep our city running smoothly for our citizens. We ask this in the name above all names, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Presley. I got something for you.
We have something for you, you should say. Way to be loud too.
So, thank you.
additions or deletions?
No matter, there is not. I'm making a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Moved and approved, moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as written. Is there any discussion? All say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Proclamations.
Do you want me to do the outstanding student first?
Yes.
Is Tammy here?
I see Cameron and Macy here. I don't know if Haley's here. Haley's here, she's back there. Yep, they're all here. Is Tammy Anderson? I don't know who Tammy is.
Committee.
Is Tammy here? Anderson?
Yeah.
That makes you the chair pro.
Mayor's got it.
Do you want me to read anything?
Yes.
I can read the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to read a little background of the outstanding students. The Outstanding Student Award Program started in 1984. The City Commission implemented this program to recognize students for outstanding examples of academic civic excellence in our community. Each year, staff and teachers, staff and administrators at the Ark City Christian Academy, Ark City Middle School, and Ark City High School, and Ark Kelly County Community College nominate students who they think are qualified to honor. Each year, Outstanding Student Award Committee appointed by the mayor, the City Commission receives all nominations from three schools. Short informal interviews are conducted. Each nominee and the committee then chooses three finalists from each school to represent the nominees. From all nine finalists, a top student is chosen from each school. Of the top three students, one is chosen for overall city of our Kansas City Outstanding Student of the Year, and they will be awarded a $1,000 scholarship. The first runner-up receives a $500 scholarship. And the second runner-up receives a $250 scholarship from the city of our Kansas City.
Second runner-up?
And so this year's second runner-up is Haley McCorrey. Is that you saying that?
Correy.
Yeah. And then the first runner-up is Macy Wolfenberger. And then our overall outstanding this year is Cameron Mendoza.
Congrats, ladies and gentlemen.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Best speech. Best speech.
Thing y'all would like to say?
I'm thankful for this opportunity, and I'm going to use this scholarship towards my education and career. So, I'm very thankful for that.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Congrats, ladies.
Hey, compliment you. I want to be first. Come in, settle in.
Come in and face the crowd.
Face the crowd.
Turn around. There you go.
Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first to be claimed by the Continental Congress in 1775. Whereas the United States Congress by joint resolution from April 1952, provided that the President shall set aside to proclaim a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as National Day of Prayer on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation. And whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday amennium each year as a National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of the United States Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for all Americans to join the united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God. Give thanks for blessings, receive requests, healing for wounds endured, and ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and its citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in the Ark City of Arkansas City, Kansas. And when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them, while we recognize our dependence on God's continued blessings and guidance. Now therefore, the mayor of Ark City, of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4, 2023 as a day of prayer in Arkansas City. And encourage all citizens of Arkansas City to observe this day in ways, appreciate its importance and significance, and recognize this year's theme. Pray fervently and righteous and avail much from Bible verse James 5:16B.
Commissioner Warren's coming to see you.
Good job out there. A lot of words, wouldn't it? Thank you so much. You did a good job.
Grant.
Come on up, Grant.
Mr. Grant, decent. And you.
Whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today. And whereas music is one of the most sublime of human pursuits and is subscribed to be all races and creed. And whereas music is the language of all people and is one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. And whereas the National Federation of Music Clubs dedicated to encouraging young musicians, increasing musical knowledge, and advancing American music and its cooperating organizations join forces annually in May to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music and everyday living. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 7 through 14, 2023 as National Music Week. And Arkansas City and asks that all citizens of this community observe and take part in activities recognizing the importance of music, musicians, and musical organizations to the cultural life of our city, state, nation, and world. And recognizing this year's theme, music, is a worldwide adventure.
Great job, sir. Keep coming on to that. On behalf of Mayor Spillman and the governing body of the city of Arkansas City, I'm going to reach you with this certificate of appreciation for your assistance in reading the proclamation, National Music Week. Thank you. You done an excellent job.
Thank you. Emma?
Come on up there, she comes. Now she's here right there.
Whereas 1993, the American Nurses Association declared May 6 through the 12th as the National Week to celebrate and elevate the profession profession. Each year, the celebration ends on May 12th, which was Florence Nightingale's birthday. And whereas National Nurses Week is a time for everyone, individuals, employers, other healthcare professionals, community leaders, and nurses to recognize the vast contributions and positive impact of America's over 4 million registered nurses for their service, dedication, and daily sacrifices in caring for others and improving the health of patients. And whereas National Hospital Week is May 7 through the 13th of 2023. And whereas National Hospital Week celebrates the hospitals, health systems, and men and women who support the health and well-being of communities through dedication and care from the heart. And whereas celebrating National Hospital Week provides an opportunity to thank all the dedicated individuals, physicians, nurses, therapists, engineers, food service workers, volunteers, administrators, and more for their contributions. And whereas the hard-working people who staff our nation's hospitals, including the registered nurses and other personnel at S E K Health, deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy and safe. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 6 through the 12th of 2023 as National Nurses Week. And May 7 through the 13th of 2023 as National Hospital Week in Arkansas City. And urge residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies that make trustworthy, reliable healthcare possible in our community and recognize this year's National Nurses Week. You make a difference. In National Hospital Week theme, we are healthcare.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you so much. Appreciation from the governing body.
Thank you.
Thank you. All of our young people tonight were from anywhere in the state house. We appreciate them coming in and participating in our city government. Recognition of visitors and staff.
Introduce and swearing-in new police officer Cody Hutchinson.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. So I have the honor of swearing-in a new police officer today. Officer Cody Hutchinson began his employment with the Ark City Police Department on April 12th of this year. Cody has been a lifelong resident of Arkansas City, attending Arkansas City schools, graduating high school in 2017. Cody graduated with an associate's degree in criminal justice at Cali College in 2019. Cody has worked as a lifeguard and participated in Boy Scouts for most of his life. He has most recently worked at Orchard in Arkansas City. During the interview process, Cody informed us that he wants to serve in the community he grew up in. He also informed us that his great-grandfather was one of the very first motorcycle police officers here in Arkansas City. So Cody has a generational connection to this community and the department. We want to welcome Cody to the A C P D family. And at this time, we would ask the city clerk to administer the oath of honor.
Can you raise your right hand and please repeat after me? On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
Honor betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution of the, excuse me, the Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
First, welcome.
So proud of you, Cody. Go ahead, John.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard. I've never met him. Congratulations.
Okay, next. To recognize the Arkansas City Police Department promotion. Tuckhorn and Yescro.
I appreciate that. So I also have the honor of talking about recent promotions that we've had at the Ark City Police Department. And I'll, yes, Commissioner Jennings as well. The police department recently promoted four officers in March and April of this year. Lieutenant Corey Combs was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Combs began his career with the department in 2015. He has served in the capacity of patrol officer and had a very successful stint in investigations as a detective. Lieutenant Combs brings his knowledge and investigative skill into the lieutenant position to help guide and mentor the officers on his patrol shift. He is currently assigned to day shift patrol. Three officers were recently promoted to sergeant in March of this year. Sergeant Kelsey Horneck began her career with the Ark City Police Department in 2016 by working on patrol and then made the move to work in investigations. She left the department briefly in 2021, but returned to her role as a detective. She is currently assigned as the sergeant detective at the department. She has built a reputation as a very strong investigator and can be counted on to respond during critical incidents and for large-scale investigations. Sergeant Corey Tuckhorn began her career with the department as an officer in 2016. However, prior to that, she served as an emergency communications officer for several years. Most recently, Sergeant Tuckhorn has served as the crisis intervention officer, working side-by-side with a community co-responder from four county mental health. She's also the handler for the department's emotional support dog, SAP. Corey is known for helping others at every turn. Sergeant Tuckhorn is currently assigned to day shift patrol. Sergeant Mike Esquero began his career with the department in 2019. Sergeant Esquero emerged as a great candidate to become a school resource officer. This school year, Sergeant Esquero has filled the role as S R O at the middle school and has done a fine job. I hear nothing but positive feedback about his ability to build trust and rapport with students and staff. Sergeant Esquero was recently awarded the state V F W Officer of the Year award, which has only been awarded one other time, and that was with Sergeant Kelsey Horneck. Each of these promotions follow a theme. These officers have developed skills that have propelled their careers forward, whether that is investigating major crime cases or reaching out to those in mental health crisis or providing mentorship and guidance to the youth in our community. It is clear that the future of the Arkansas City Police Department is in wonderful hands. At this time, I would like to congratulate each of these officers on their promotion. Sergeant Mike Esquero?
You guys went the other way. Good job. Congratulations, sir. Oh, excuse me. Let me go over here.
Congrats. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You didn't stand nearly as tall when you started.
It is toasty in here.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
He's a boy.
Congratulations.
And last but not least.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna double check though.
Thank you so much.
You're the one counterfeiter at Arco Lala.
Yes, I did. A lot helped everyone. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
I got something to say. During Arco Lala, we had counterfeit money. And Sergeant Horneck came interviewed in, you know, about, I don't know, 10, 12 hours later. They had each thing. Congratulations.
Back up with words.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Chief.
That was awesome. There goes the room.
Really thought all those people.
Consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve it. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say. Motion carried. See business.
Okay, City Manager Department in ordinance authorizing the vacating of Taylor Avenue adjoining Lot 1 of Block 15 and Lot 13 of Block 4, Sleep Edition, Arkansas City, Kelly County, Kansas.
That title wasn't as bad as your hand. Melanie Vaden has filed a request to vacate a portion of Taylor Avenue in Sleep Edition. And it's just a small half-block basically from G Street to the alley, to the east side of the alley. And she was wanting to do this to expand the yard space. She's been maintaining this property for a while. The street is largely, uh, the street. There's some brattle there, and that's about it. It's not really something the city has been maintaining. All the adjacent property owners were notified of this. And we have a technical advisory committee that reviewed it. And there's no utilities in this particular area. And so they didn't have any concerns about granting this property to her. The way it typically works is half of the property would go to the south and half of the property goes to the north. The planning commission held a public hearing and voted back on April 11th to recommend approval.
You say all surrounding people have been notified?
Yeah, everybody within 200 feet received a.
Did anyone show up at this meeting?
I think we had one. This never stays that.
But everybody agreed on it?
Yeah. Yeah, and I talked to a couple of them.
That being said, I make a motion, we authorize the vacancy of the Taylor Avenue adjoining Lot 1 of Block 5 and Lot 15 and Block 4, Sleep Edition, of Arkansas City, Kansas. I think you meant Lot 1 of Block 15, right? Yeah. Yeah, Block 15 and Lot 14, yeah. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor?
Hold call.
Hold call, yes. Yep, I missed that. Sorry.
Commissioner Inger?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Denny?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spillman?
Yes.
Next items under the fire department. And it's a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase four 16-foot industrial fans from Hunter Fan Company for a mountain not to exceed $19,984.
Summed it up.
Sir?
Yes.
Could you please state your name so the people who don't know you, know you?
Patrick Ramirez, Assistant Chief, Arkansas Fire Department. Actually, I want to install four 16-foot ceiling fans to help evacuate the diesel exhaust and fumes out of the building to reduce the heat in the building to provide a safer and more comfortable working environment for our employees.
So four, are we just going to center them all the way down through the middle of it, space them out, or how?
There may have to be a bit of an offset because one of the D E P, the largest truck, is runt right down the middle. So there may be some offset.
And will they be putting them in, or will the city be putting them in, the fans?
Uh, the city.
Okay.
Is this a budgeted item?
The majority of it's going to be paid for by grant. That Ark City EMS fire was given stemmed from some COVID funds to provide for the EMS department. So I believe only about 2,000 of it comes from the grant. And the rest will be made up from budget.
Okay. So it's an EMS grant?
Yes.
Okay.
It was the American Provider Fund grant that we received last year. The money needs to be spent by June. And we really need these fans. Last year, because of the heat in the building, we fried. So some of our equipment had to be replaced because it got too hot. And we all know the exhaust down there. And we are a combined department. So it meets the criteria for the grant, so.
How much was that grant total?
$17,000. Do you have that right?
So you'll spend it all. If $70,000, five, we got a piece right there.
So, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a whole lot else. Discussion wise, I'd like to make a motion, we authorize the city of Arkansas City. Discussion wise, I'd like to make a motion, we authorize the City of Ark Kansas City to purchase four 16-foot industrial fans from Hunter Fan Company for a amount not to exceed $19,984.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Curious, was the grant application done in-house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then I think I would request that in addition to the motion as made, that you would also include expression of appreciation from the governing body for the efforts to secure the grant. I would gladly add that to the motion.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the City of Ark City to purchase two Zoll X Series Advanced Cardiac Monitor Defibrillators from Zoll Medical Corporation of Chisholm Ford, MA.
Ford, Massachusetts.
For an amount not to exceed $82,660.75.
Mary Wheatley, Fire EMS.
Thank you.
So, we currently use Zoll monitors, and they've used those for, since I've been there and I'm sure before my time. The average life expectancy of those monitors are six to eight years. We have typically been getting eight years out of them. As of December of last year, we're no longer able to do software upgrades on the current monitors we have because they've exceeded their life expectancy. One of the monitors that we want to replace was purchased in 2014. The other one was purchased in 2015. We did budget for that last year.
So, you have how many cardiac monitors?
We have four, so we're pressing to replace two this year and two next year.
Yeah.
To keep the cost down as much as we can for the city.
And that's a budgeted item out of the department?
Yes, sir, we budgeted for that last year for this year.
Your master.
What do you get with a worry-free service plan beyond worry-free?
They do our PMs every year, and most all of the work that we have done on them is covered under warranty. I think there's a warranty included in that cost, and then we have a warranty that we pay every year. We won't have to pay a warranty on these next year because it's already covered.
Is this the company that, when you are able to save a life, that they?
Yes.
Okay, they send you?
They're the ones that, Zoll Medical is the one that gives the Clinical Save Awards for when we have patients who have suffered a cardiac respiratory arrest and survive and get to go home.
Have a warning, have a warning.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the City of Ark Kansas City to purchase two Zoll X Series Advanced Cardiac Monitor Defibrillators from Zoll Medical Corporation of Chelmsford, Massachusetts for an amount not to exceed $82,660.75.
Second. Didn't move and seconded? Is there any further discussion?
I've got one on the, how soon can we get them once we?
With my purchase, I'm usually within six weeks.
Okay, and what do we do on the old ones? They're just worthless?
We trade them in.
Okay.
We trade them in, and then I usually refurbish them for educational institutions or purchase them.
Any further discussion? Commissioner? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Items for discussion by city commissioners?
We talked about, key, and so here, we talked about the signs, you know, on that first street, and so are you going to give Tony then?
Yeah, I sent an email to Chief Burr and Tony and asked them to work together on the location and get that done.
Okay.
And I think they had responded, that they got the email, and I'm getting it done now.
How many, how many sign-ups that we had on this side-by-side and all that stuff?
You have five today, Chief?
Yeah, we have five, so.
I saw one driving by the office this afternoon. I had a debate still.
So, the license tags, everything there, they just sign up, pay, and get their tag?
Yes, sir.
And then you inspect their vehicle?
Right, so the process has identified so far that I think it's going to be okay moving forward is that the forms are filled out and returned to the city clerk's office. She then forwards that to me. I reach out to the individual, schedule the inspection, and if the vehicle matches what we need as far as the inspection, they're cleared to come in and pay their $25. If they don't pay upfront, I make sure that the vehicle is going to meet inspection.
But they can't drive until you inspect it, right?
Right.
Okay.
And at the time that they pay, at that time, they get their little permit, so the yellow permit with the number on it.
And where's that go, on their inside or outside?
Outside, on the back of the vehicle, so that way officers can see them.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Also, the other day, we didn't do any discussion on these, having a second court date. I would like to see that we get that put on the agenda so we get some discussion on it.
I was going to update you guys on that tonight, so. What we've worked on is the June 2nd work session. If we can start at 11 that day, and at 11, we can talk about the court dates, and then we'll move into the budget stuff after that, so.
It's on June 11?
Uh, June 2nd work.
On 2nd?
Yeah.
What day is that on?
Friday.
Thanks. Anything else from Commissioner?
If we, I think I got an email, we got the supportive letter for the air initiative.
Yes. You'd that letter that needs to be?
Yes, it's floating around.
Okay.
There's a letter somewhere.
No pun intended. So, to support the air proposal.
Yeah, what that about, I don't know if you're all aware of it, but so Wichita is an airport is working on a grant for air service from Wichita to DC, and so it'd expand the direct routes from there. So, they're looking for support from the region and through REAP, and so this would be a great way to support the region and hopefully get some extra, extra air routes out of our local airport.
All reasonable favors, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, we have comments from the audience?
I do not have anyone signed up.
Somebody not sign up?
No one signed up.
Am I supposed to sign up?
Yes, I would. Mickey would like to speak if Mickey might.
I didn't.
I didn't.
For those that don't know me, some know me as Mr. Mickey. And my question has to do with S C H M I T H, for those that don't know the spelling. 426 North C Street.
Thank you.
Ark Kansas City, Kansas. And my question has to do with, and interest, Northwest Community Center. I don't know if this is the appropriate form, but I'm curious to know what goes on there for kids? And in the future, what more could go on there for children? And I would be happy to be part of that process as I've been involved with a lot of youth programming in my 43-year professional career.
Well, before COVID, we used to have that Thursday night gathering up there.
I was told that that still happens.
Has it started?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, have you talked to the board?
I have. I know very little about the Northwest Community Center, but I have talked to Cindy and briefly.
What'd she say?
They're working on it.
Okay.
And the hours are at least on the board, around the outside 8 to 4:30. When I was a kid, we had awesome recreation programming for children. Drop-in, free. I'm not saying everything needs to be free, but I'm pretty sure, and I've lived here for 23 years, and I probably ride more bikes than most people around town, and I don't see a lot going on there. But I really think that there's a need for that area. The building is there, right? We pay for the building. So, is there a process that I could be included in helping create something? I'm not saying this summer.
Can I ask, you said you visited with the director?
Yes.
Cindy Bennett, did she make reference to the use of things in the game room area?
There's stuff there. She claimed that people do come there periodically, but I don't know.
I don't think it's been a function program since COVID.
No, I understand, but I'm not talking about COVID.
I know, I know, but it needs to get going.
Because we are past COVID, right?
Yeah, we need to get going again.
Yeah.
Gary Hale, thanks to chairman of that board, probably need to contact.
Are you recommending that, that's how I go about this? Or is there some other option?
Well, I'd be happy if you'd get with me, and then we can kind of work through the channels and, because.
Yeah.
I probably don't disagree with what you're saying up here, so.
So, if you want to give me a call?
Yep. It'll be next week.
When my substitute gig ends in about a week and a half, I don't have a job. Not that I want to get paid to do this, but I would gladly help push this forward.
Well, no, our Optimus Club, we do a lot of cooking, have been in the past for that thing, you know, hot dogs and stuff like that, and we need to get that thing going and.
I mean, I don't know if anybody here has ever run before an after-school childcare, but I've been involved in it many times. I've run a summer camp. There are great opportunities that could happen in that building.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
They've had.
Looks like we have a resource that we haven't been using.
Yeah, that's right. They've had in the past, again, I'm not speaking in the framework of COVID. I'm just saying that functionally, the amenities inside the building, they've had access to computers hooked up to the internet with monitor, with adult monitoring for appropriate use.
Well, I know that Port County does go there periodically with children as well.
They do that. USD 470 takes some students over there for activities during the day. That game room area is typically available for young people who come. It's kind of been used under the banner of young people who come home from school about 3:30.
You're putting another term latchkey then?
Parents aren't home from work yet, and so.
But it closes at 4:30.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's another hour of coverage that is there. So, kids are usually home by 3:30 from school.
Something better than nothing.
So, something is better than nothing, but I'm saying that, so there have been. They got the basketball court in there that's kind of an open activity and lots of games and interaction, and so it's kind of been a, it has been functionally a, yeah, poor latchkey kids, just a place they can go have some adult supervision and be constructively engaged.
But, sorry, I forgot, how was that?
Yeah, well, that's fine. That's wonderful. We know. We need to have people like yourself to help Cindy up there, you know, have somebody else, because she can't, it's a hard time of her to do it all, you know. That's why Gary, they try to get people to come in to help her out when they're having activities and stuff like that, you know, to show support and stuff, so. That's, I'm glad you brought, came up there and talked, you know, about this thing because it needs to be done, so.
And obviously, you've had some background, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're a resource we need to use.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. City manager.
I'll make it quick because I know the farmers market's closing soon, so. I put a legislative update in front of you that was from the REAP organization. Couple things we might keep in mind as the session's over and. We probably ought to keep an eye on local sales tax next year with the governor vetoing the tax bill. You know, the legislature will probably come back with another tax bill next year, and so we need to watch that local sales tax thing because they may get snuck in again. The other thing that we're kind of waiting to see what the governor does with her veto powers is on Senate Bill 8, there is a, there is a piece in there that it's about local government competing with private business. It has a potential of, I mean, really designed with Genesis Health Clubs in mind and rec commissions, but I think it spills into a lot of other things, like maybe restaurants, things like that, because we have a senior citizen that serves meals. So, what it basically boils down to is a private business says government's competing against them. There's a, you know, they don't have to pay taxes and stuff. So, there's some things there that we'll have to see what the governor does with that piece, so. But other than that, just kind of a recap of what happened legislatively. Speaking of budget, I just want to remind you of our budget retreat on May 12th, and I put a calendar for the day for you guys to kind of see what's happening. And we'll have Beth Warren here at 11 to go over our rate reviews, and then the auditor will be here at noon. We'll have lunch, and then we'll kind of start stepping down. We'll kind of kick off lunch with Matt. Matt will keep you guys awake. And then we'll go through the folks and then end with Chief Burr, so. That's so you know what's going on there. And like we mentioned before, earlier, at the June 2nd work session, we'll be some more budget. It'll be the outside agencies, but if you guys can come in at 11, we'll remind you about that. We can talk about the municipal court issues. The enterprise fleet management that we've been working on. So, we just had our first round of the new vehicles flipping over. You know, we did really well selling the used vehicles last year and purchasing, you know, bringing in the new ones. So, with the new ones selling, we actually come out ahead of what we spent last year on vehicles, so it's, so far, it's working. You know, it's a $1,000 gain over, was it three, four vehicles, three vehicles? Four vehicles. But we also got to add in, so that, we saved money on fuel and maintenance on those vehicles as well, so. And that's not a number that we haven't put numbers to yet, but so, so far, it's working well. We got pickups getting ready to turn over next, so I think we'll probably see better numbers on pickups than we do on those cars, but we'll see. They poured concrete on the alley today on the north side. Probably won't pour tomorrow in the south, probably the next day, but it should be poured by the end of this week. And the bridge demo on 15th Street should get started this week. The truck stop sewer design is waiting on KDOT's approval, and it's at 50% complete, so that's moving. And then the mass and mill and overlay end of May again, so that's kind of what's going on.
What about their hike bike trail?
So, the plans have been resubmitted again. I just talked to Chris today about that, and they have acknowledged receiving in this time, so we're just kind of waiting now for their review of the plans, so.
Well, we've got the money just sitting in the account, right?
Yeah, it keep, we just keep having a holdup with KDOT saying the plans aren't getting properly for review, and so then they.
So, whose fault is that?
I, I don't know.
Technology grimace.
Probably.
Yeah, it's happened several times. I don't know who to point a finger at on it, but it keeps delaying it, so. That's all I've got.
Want some lunch tonight? Move into the audience, yes.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Too late, everyone already up.
Got to speak up.